Okay, we've got five o'clock. Call the meeting to order today, Monday, March thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. Roll call, we have selectmen Eric Eaton, Mackenzie Jewitt, Kevin Buck, myself Jamie Thurlo, town manager Jesse Dunbar, town clerk Pete Deandran, and we'll just say members of the school and the school budget. Adoption of agenda, is there anything anyone would like to change? Okay, approval of minutes, we have the minutes from March sixth, twenty twenty-three.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of March sixth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from March sixth, twenty twenty-three. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Elaine, just, is, are you doing Zoom on any of these meetings? I just got a text from Elaine asking.
Um, she's doing Zoom, does she need a code?
Um, I, I don't know, she just.
Um, Jamie, can you?
Yeah, Zoom code, she needs a code.
I already, I just thought of that. Yeah, Howdy Keldner earlier, he's sick as a dog, so.
I'll make a motion to excuse Howdy from tonight's meeting.
Second.
Then move and seconded to excuse Howdy Goodwin from tonight's meeting. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Let me pause for a second, Jesse. Alright, approval of warrants. Latey short, warrantless. Warrant eighty-six for one hundred fifteen thousand, four hundred ninety dollars and eighteen cents. Warrant eighty-seven for eleven thousand, four hundred twenty-three dollars and eighty-four cents. And eighty-eight for eight thousand, six hundred one dollars and twenty-one cents.
Make a motion to per warrants eighty-six through eighty-eight?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve warrants eighty-six through eighty-eight. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Alright, I guess we are on to regular business. First thing we have is the FY twenty-four budget prep for the school budget.
Alright.
Who would like to start?
I'm gonna dive right in. I'm gonna dive right in. So, first of all, I always like to just start by saying thank you. We have an amazing team of people who sit down every year to put their heads together. From these two folks here to our school board and the teachers that helped from the very start. So, I'm grateful for that team and the opportunity to sit down and work with you folks as well. In taking a look at this budget, this is slightly different than the last one that we presented to you. Percentages and whatnot have decreased from the original budget. I put together just a one-page document that each of you should have, although I did skip Jamie initially, that just tries to break things down in terms of what the more significant increases are or the decreases. Taking into account, cost of living adjustment right now is at an eight point seven percent. Our overall budget increase is at a seven point one eight percent increase. That increase to town appropriation looks different, that's a sixteen point three five percent increase to town appropriation. Due to, we are receiving less state subsidy this year. We did not qualify for the, give me the language.
I should not recommend this.
Thank you, I had that just an hour ago. We have in this budget, we are setting aside a hundred and fifty thousand that will go towards carryover. We have in this budget some more significant things, there are two additional ed tech positions. We have had to finish this year out, typically we've budgeted for nine support staff. We are finishing this year out with eleven due to increased needs this year. And I don't see that we will not continue to need those additional people looking ahead into next year because they don't just magically disappear. So, those, there's those two positions. We, this year are funding a mental health therapist who also fills the role of social worker and providing wraparound services for students and their families. We are funding that through our, through our ESSR funds, through our over relief funds. And we have that position applied in here. We are continuing to work through figuring out, sorting out our space needs. And so, there are funds in there for additional space. Looking at a lease for next year. And continuing with the planning process, we're moving forward with what would be considered phase one of trying to figure out what our options are. And I want to be really clear that that is all that we're doing right now is working with a company or working with cameraman to figuring, to figure out what our options are for space issues in the future. So, we are, we have currently approved phase one, which is, I think, sixty thousand for this year. And then we have those funds in for next year as well, looking at phase two. And, and I think that we also have, so, we were supposed to buy a bus this current school year, the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. However, the costs of buses have increased so much that we do not have what we typically would have to purchase a bus on the same timeline that we would have in the past. So, this budget, we had talked about the idea of possibly leasing a bus. And then the school committee voted, we decided not to do that because if we lease a bus, then that impacts the amount of funding that would be able to continue to go towards reserve in the future and would lengthen the duration of time before we would be able to purchase the next bus. So, it, it impacts that cycle of when we're going to be ready to be able to purchase that bus in the future. Does that make sense? Okay. Let's see. Those are the more significant things that are in this budget that, that contribute to the overall increase this year. The school committee did request that we include eighty-five hundred towards retirement, and that's a difference that's in there for ours, for some of our support staff that do not currently receive retirement through the school system. And so, they made an amendment at our last school board meeting to include that with the approval of this budget. So, in, in total, I guess, our proposed budget is four million, three hundred ninety-eight thousand, one hundred and fifty-eight dollars. I'm more than happy to leave you guys a few minutes to take a look at that. Answer any additional questions.
Is the sixty thousand for the phase one already been budgeted? Was that the current budget?
For this year, yes.
Yeah, okay. So, it's not showing up on this? That's all.
It's under, it's folded into the capital outlay.
Okay, so, I was looking, there's not a sixty thousand dollar total in this, so I just wanted to double check.
Nope. Staple this page upside down. So, underneath capital outlay, the buildings line, we have a decrease there of a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. So, there are funds that are budgeted in there, which include replacement of some doors, some cameras, some space needs, and, and also phase two.
Okay, and you mentioned earlier something about setting aside a hundred and fifty thousand? I hate these numbers. I know you weren't really.
A hundred and fifty is what we're not using of the carryover and saving it aside for twenty-four, twenty-five budget. Because if you don't, then you're gonna have a.
Okay, that's, that's. I'm trying to figure out some way we could put some work towards this. And it's not that you haven't done work, great work, and not that we don't appreciate it.
I hear you, I absolutely hear you. It, it's, it's hard to bring this forward, and, and yet, the cost of everything has gone up. And so, that doesn't make it easier. Additionally, coming out of a pandemic, some of the things that we're handling on a regular basis, I can't imagine not having a mental health therapist there moving forward. And so, those are some things that I think are large contributors, for sure. I absolutely, I, I hear what you're saying. I'd love to be able to find ways to, to bring this down as well. I also, you know, I know that when you look at the cost of everything right now, we are below where the cost of living adjustment is.
Well, I guess that state funding drop made quite a difference too. I mean, that's nine percent.
We are continuing, I, I'm, I'm so sorry.
No, that's.
You're the one person I never.
No, none of, none of our schools got it.
So, that, that accounts for a lot of the high school increase too?
They didn't get it before.
Oh, okay, so that's, that's all, that's all the high school.
I think the other, to, to your point, like, there are budgets that pass before ours do, and, and those figures are rolled in here too. And so, you know, like, like budget or AOS, those things have already passed and are, are folded into our budget too. So, when we present this to you, those figures aren't gonna change, they can't change.
Okay.
And then, one of the biggest things is that cost of living adjustment, nine percent, that's right off the top. That, some years is only two percent. So, that's a huge, that's something huge, plus it's, I mean, and then you've got seven on top of it, so. And I feel like it's just a perfect storm of everything just came together this year, that's all.
And you're not asking for anything unreasonable, and all the things that you guys need are, you know, mandated by the state, and there's no wiggle room there, so I get it, and I know it's not an easy job for any of you guys to do, so.
I appreciate that.
It's not fun, but.
It is fun, it is fun, it is less fun, but it is fun. It's a great job, it's a great job. And, and, you know, I'm happy to present this on behalf of those kids. I'd love to see that this is, that this is less. I also feel like a lot of social services are provided in that building. And, and with that comes additional people, additional supports that kids need, need, because those aren't available somewhere else. And I think that we see that that is something that continues to move to, in, in the direction of schools.
I guess you could say that the earlier some of those are taken care of, the younger level, potentially, you know, you see the high schools' needs for some of those services that they're providing, you know, it would be less particularly for special education costs and other, other needs that they're seeing if we're seeing more intervention down at the lower levels.
We are waiting, we have, we've met recently with the DOE because as we're working with, to try to determine bringing pre-K to Tremont, we're trying to be creative about that. We are receiving funding in the amount of hundred, excuse me, eighty-two thousand from the DOE in grant funding for pre-K. We've, we've applied for grants through the Tremont School Fund, through a variety of the Emory Grant, to try to help with funding in various ways. We will be holding on March thirty-first, a pre-K screening with Head Start, which if we have enough families who are eligible, then, then they could potentially help to contribute funds. Either way, they'll partner with us, but if we have enough families who are eligible, so please help spread the word, then that could contribute financially as well. I think the perfect storm of coming out of a pandemic and, and trying to, we've been trying to sort out the space needs for a long time. I think what the board and I continue to struggle with is if we press pause on that and we don't put funds in to continue that process, then we're, we're just sitting. We're sitting still instead of trying to sort that out, and that puts us further behind in terms of addressing those needs in the future.
Am I correct assuming that a lot of the social services that may have been done elsewhere in the past are now falling on the schools? And that's part of your budget? So, it might be worth calling state legislators and mentioning some of that? You don't like your tax bill?
I think, you know, we're happy to help with that too. I don't want that to ever sound like we're not, I truly believe that, that they need these services. But at the same time, I think that, that, that comes with a cost. That isn't something that the teachers can pick up or that I can pick up in extra time because that extra time doesn't exist, but, so, thank you.
I don't see any where, where they can cut these.
Yeah, they tried.
We went over this last time, but I just, I don't see that there's anywhere to cut anymore.
I don't remember what the number was last time, but.
Nineteen point three percent increase to the town appropriation.
So, that's budget that you guys worked on?
So. The town appropriation would be three point six, is that correct?
Yep, three six.
Three, six, 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 yep. I'm looking at my budget folder not to.
Yeah, I'm gonna say. You guys good?
Yes, go.
We feel the same way, I need you to note that.
And we're not picking on you by any of that.
I don't think so at all, I don't think so at all. I appreciate you very much, we all, you know, this, these numbers are hard.
Yeah.
But I, I also know that, like, where we are at, this is, this is not unusual, and we are not alone in these types of figures either. I guess I'm gonna stop.
I motion to request town manager to include three million, six hundred and sixty-three thousand, one hundred and sixteen dollars as the Tremont School Fund appropriation in the FY twenty-four budget.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to request the town manager to include three million, six hundred and sixty-three thousand, one hundred and sixteen dollars as the Tremont School Fund appropriation in the FY twenty-four budget. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you for putting that down.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
I'll leave that up, I know Jesse's gonna have some more. Alright, next we have the FY twenty-four budget. Jesse, with your changes that you've made.
So, there's new pages in your package that have been updated and required. Since the last meeting, a couple adjustments including Harvard Master K based on currently where we're at, filling Harvard Master's position. I updated the interest received in the secretary fund after moving that to a new city. And some other changes, as well as the initial audit numbers have come back. And then, in turn, so your fund balances are updated. On the last page of the general fund, currently projected in that second column over the excess of revenues for FY twenty-two was one hundred and eighty-four thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eight. You currently or previously encumbered about another eighteen thousand over that two thousand cents the audit, auditors gathered our numbers this fall. And then, there's a request in your agenda tonight for a couple more incumbences now that we have the final numbers. As you'll see, each year, the use of the surplus funds in the revenue side of the budget is intended to reduce the surplus fund balance to offset the budget. However, we continue to still add to the surplus funds each year. So, therefore, with this budget, I think it's perfectly fine to use those funds again as we have proposed, since the fund balance is still climbing. If you approve the encumbrances on tonight's agenda, then that number would change to somewhere over sixty, seventy thousand change going into the surplus. So, the only, there's no change to the amount of the budget since last time. Still a zero increase over the last year. The use of the surplus funds is currently one twenty-eight, nine oh nine. This changed from the last meeting.
Okay, thank you, Jesse.
Your budget looks great, Jesse.
Yeah, great job, Jesse.
Yeah. And I agree with, if we have to pull a little bit more and keep it up, keep it at zero, then that's probably the best thing to do.
And I will just highlight for you, I did update also, now that we have the school numbers, the budget message pages, that kind of go over the budget in more explanation. And the blended tax rate after we put in the municipal school, high school, and county comes out to a ten point two percent increase to the middle range for FY twenty-four. That comes out to two hundred and ninety-eight dollars per year on a home value of two hundred and fifty thousand, or twenty forty-three per month. Where it's ten point two, it's pretty easy to estimate what your taxes are going to go up.
Good job.
I don't think you improved much from what you have there.
You got it.
Yeah.
Anything anybody want to suggest for Jesse here?
Nope, I can't think of anything.
No, no, it looks good, looks great. Alright, do you need a motion on that where we're just?
No, nothing on that.
Yeah. Alright, next we'll move on to on the regular business is the short-term rentals. We have previously had a discussion about the possibility of hiring Noel Musson. Musson moved to help assist the planning board with short-term rental discussions. And basically, looking to get Noel's recommendation on how to move forward.
Awesome. Thanks, I'm Noel Musson. Happy to be here, I guess, to talk about short-term rentals. I know it's a really passionate topic, a very emotional topic. And, yeah, I've had a few conversations with Jesse about it. We're sort of in the, we are in the process of writing a short-term rental licensing ordinance for the town of Deser, I'm sure everybody's read the articles in the paper and whatnot, and how, how much, you know, what the issues are surrounding that. So, I'm not sure, I, I don't, I think, I was really struggling with this as I was coming over here trying to think, you know, what is the best approach? So, I think it's really more of a question back to the community. But I think what we want to do is really set up a conversation about the topic. And what I've learned in this process is, is the big issues that have come up in Mount Desert are really two things. One is, what's the, is the challenge and your concern about the availability of year-round housing opportunities? There's also a concern about the availability of seasonal worker housing opportunities. And, and as it relates to short-term rentals, the, the other concern is what do short-term rentals do? Trying to think of a good way to describe it. But what are the, let's say, the land use implications of short-term rentals that are different than, like, just, just a house? So, there are really two separate things that you need to think about. The availability of and affordability of year-round housing opportunities is not, is a different, you, you address that in a different way than you would if, if main concern were, you know, just making sure that the, your, your neighborhood isn't negatively affected by a short-term rental or if you're at the end of a subdivision road, you know, you have people coming in and out every seven days like you would in that type of business. What does that do to your road? Or is there a concern about septic system overload or all those other things that I would consider kind of land use things? So, in Mount Desert, what we decided to do was, we created a, a really, pretty simple actually, despite what might be reported, a licensing process whereby you just have to fill out an application form, then there'll be a registration fee. And the goal there really was to try to understand where and how many short-term rentals there are in, in that community. So, then you can start to quantify in, in using that data, understand what the implications are, you know, for a lot of different things. I think that what gets lost is that's not the silver bullet to, to solve the affordability issue on MDI, the year-round availability issue on MDI. There's a, there's a full suite of things that you need to start to work on for that to really be effective. Short-term rental regulations are one thing, but that's not, if that were to pass and you started limiting the number of short-term rentals, that's not automatically gonna make affordability and availability here. There's lots of other things you need to work on. So, I think one of the, my recommendation is that we really ought to have, I mean, we can draft a, a short-term rental licensing ordinance that's really simple and people can consider it. Sometimes it's nice to draft that ordinance just as a starting point for the conversation. So, I'm happy to work with the planning board and draft something that's, that at least instigates the conversation. So, just by putting something on an agenda like this, I'm sure we have people in the audience that are here just to talk about this thing. And, and I think that, what I, one of the things that I took away from the other work that we've done is that's actually really important. It actually started a conversation in the town of Deser that I don't think they would have had if we hadn't put that on the, on the agenda as a topic. And, and again, I'm not positive what's gonna, what would the outcome would be in Tremont, but I'm almost sure it would be the same two questions. One would, again, is how do we deal with the fact that we're all concerned with the availability and affordability of year-round housing opportunities and seasonal housing opportunities? Not just from an ownership perspective, but from a rental perspective. And what are the implications, if there are negative implications of that use in a more residential setting? Yeah. So, I'd love to have a discussion about it, or to just say, this is exactly what you need to do because unfortunately, I can't stand here and say, this is how we need to solve that problem. It's a bigger, a much bigger problem. And I will say, for the record, I actually own a short-term rental in Tremont. That used to be my family's land many, many years ago on Ennis Point. So, I totally understand both issues, both sides of the issue. And I have kids in town, and I grew up here in Tremont, so. Fully appreciate the struggle and, and the, you know, the importance of short-term rentals to some people and the challenge that, that, that starts to instigate. But I think it's much more of a conversation than, let's just go in and here's what you need to do, exactly what you need to do. I don't think that helps, but that's kind of the conclusion I've come to.
It's a very complex issue, and that's good to hear, that you say that even, there's a lot more to it, that if you, you go after one end or the other of it, that's not gonna solve the problem. You know, it's the, as far as year-round affordable housing, like, it's a huge issue. There's, there's many, many different angles to it.
Yeah, I feel like it's, let's identify what problem it is that you're trying to solve, and then determine whether or not this particular approach is appropriate to that problem. And if it is, great, or it maybe isn't one of the things that we need to do. But if you're strictly talking about, you know, let's make more housing available, you know, there's a larger conversation about, well, how do you make more housing available? Where do you make more housing available? How does that integrate with the comprehensive plan? You know, Ben, Ben and I have talked about this quite a bit, so I know you're working on future managed plans, so that's a good time for that. What about, you know, thinking about the developer as a partner in that process? And how can a town be a partner in that process? Or what incentives do we need to actually start to put in the land use ordinance that would make that, you know, that an incentive for somebody to do? All those things, you know, what, what, what ways can we hold the developer accountable to do good things versus, you know, all that? So, there's so many challenges related to that. I think if you did do a licensing ordinance, one of the things that I've always thought would be really interesting is make a fee that's, you know, appropriate, but also use that fee to help solve the problem that you're actually trying to solve. So, make a commitment to using that fee to put back toward housing rather than try to, you know, integrate that fee into the, if there's a way to do it, I haven't quite figured out how this works yet. How to, how to, you know, transition that from the general fund to, to an appropriate, you know. Let's make the issue part of the solution rather than. let's make the issue part of the solution rather than, you know, continue to make it a whole problem.
One question I have for you is, when we first were talking about this, or it was brought to our attention more so, we talked about having a public hearing. The only trouble, I, I'm a huge fan of public hearings, but it seems like if you don't have something structured beforehand, it's just, you know, people that are for something, people that are against something and back and forth, back and forth. Nothing really seems to get accomplished, so. Would you recommend trying to move with the planning board first, try to get like an idea? Or would you rather, you think it is more beneficial to go to the community and, and get a, a public hearing as to what people are thinking before you meet with them or?
Well, you definitely are one who want to engage the public. I think that's maybe more of a question for how the town wants to work, you know, if this were a thing. If the planning board plays a traditional role in doing the planning, then to me it would be nonsense to engage with the planning board. It's like, here's the issue that we've been tasked to come up, to, to work on by the board. Let's talk about the process that we want to go through in order to do that and then come back with the board with a recommended approach. And it could include, you know, here's what, we've had this conversation, these are the things that we, we like to have a public meeting about. And go with that effect. I'm not sure I'd go in full on with like, hey, we drafted an ordinance and now we're going to have a public hearing on that specific ordinance. I think it would be more, let's, let's work with the planning board. They've had the experience of like having to deal with other things in the community too. Maybe we engage with the comp plan, maybe kind of a joint discussion. It's, the topic that we're really dealing with is not, it, it relates to the comprehensive plan on the highest level. It's really more, it's not a, you're not going to come to the future land use plan and say, well, this is where we're going to deal with short-term rentals in this area and this is where we're not. It's not quite like that because of, of the nature of that activity, it's more residential. So I think comp plan might be more of a place to say, well, look, we want to do, you know, we have to build more houses because the supply is really one of the major concerns. We know we need to build them more affordably, so what are the policies that we want to consider? And are there areas in town where it would be more appropriate to have, to change the land use ordinance to say, density really belongs here? Or, yeah, we could do smaller lots here, but we require more open space around them. Whatever kind of tools that we could start to come up with, that's the conversation that we have with, with the comp plan. And then with the planning board, I think it's, let's talk about the technical, like how does the ordinance work here? What are the tools might we want to consider? Are we really deal, are we dealing with the land use side of things, you know, from an ordinance perspective? Should this be considered business? If so, how do we, how do we think about that? And, you know, the licensing ordinance is really a whole separate ordinance from the land use ordinance. I will say, you know, what a, what a licensing ordinance can do for you is really, it's a framework for how you think about it in the future. So it starts to help if you can understand what, what are the statistics that we can all agree to? What are, what are the numbers? We have to agree to something. Can we, can we go to Airbnb or AirDNA and pull a bunch of numbers together and try to get a good sense of it? Yes, we could probably, we could paint a rough picture, but it's never going to be that accurate picture to be able to say, look, we know for a fact that this is the number of short-term rentals we have in this community. Here's where they are, here's how they're affecting different neighborhoods. That's a whole more detailed conversation. But I guess, yeah, I would suggest starting with the planning board and then see.
Thank you.
I've had a lot of conversations about this, so I'm basically just regurgitating great house. It's so much easier to talk about it than it is to actually start off the conversation.
Yeah. Well, I'm wondering if it might be worth having like a rough outline and saying, you know, these areas are concerned and maybe like, this would be an extreme measure, this might be moderate and this would be pretty hands-off. And you could just like even present that, say, look, these are some of the concerns and this is, these are kind of, you could go from here to here and something on this. And have a little bit of an outline and some basis to begin with.
Yeah.
I mean, you must have a pretty good idea what all the concerns are right now.
Yeah, I mean, I think you, it's not, it's pretty obvious. Like I said, I boil it down to two, so I'm, I try to compartmentalize all of these things because they're very complex. So I boil it down to two concerns. One is, again, availability of housing for year-round residents and affordability of housing. And then the second concern is, what are the land use implications of that activity? So you can, I can outline that pretty easily. The extreme measure is create ordinance, put a, put a cap on it and all good, we're not doing any more. This is all we're going to, all we're going to do.
Yeah, the other thing I've heard from people in town is, you tend to get some houses that are really overcrowded and they turn to be a party spot for the whole summer. Every group that comes in has got a bunch of people, they're up all night with campfires and partying, you know, that kind of thing, they're noisy. You know, and again, that's another one of those issues that probably should be addressed. I mean, full disclosure, I've got a couple, you know, short-term rentals here.
Sure.
You know, and there's different ways of handling them. You can have a pretty hands-on approach to what goes on there, or you can just rent it and not deal with it until it's time to get it cleaned.
Yep.
And I mean, I think that might be something else that might be worth addressing. I mean, there, there's a pretty good specter move, what goes on in these places, I think, and.
Yeah, there is, and I mean, this is a good conversation to kind of have, you know, if we started with the planning board that we're having a licensing ordinance, there is a false, you could go from here to here, I think that's what you're getting at. And the way that we tend, we approached it in another, in the other community is let's, we actually started off with one that was a little more comprehensive and then got a lot of good feedback and made it less comprehensive. Because people would say, well, we have to have insurance anyway, so why are we being required to do X, Y and Z? Or, you know, things that were more appropriate for that community, then maybe a different consideration here. The other one that I still think is interesting, having just invested quite a bit of money in my septic system for my rental, is like capacity of the septic system and what that means for overcrowding and how you deal with that. Because there's a water quality issue there that you really have to think about. So those are things that you could add to a, you know, a licensing ordinance. So I think one good approach might be with the planning board, say, look, here's, here's what we could do. Here's some extremes and then we have a good conversation about it. But I think it really precipitates the conversation or, I don't know if that's the right term, but it fosters the conversation in this town about what it is, what are you really concerned with? You know, if it's the impact of the land use, like your neighbor is having a party house, there's things you can do about that. If it's, you know, affordability and availability, there's other things that you can do about that too.
Yeah, I've heard some really good ideas too. I know I've spoken before like to Mark at one of the meetings, but there's some, some really great ideas going around about how you can open up to affordable housing and, you know, it makes it more attractive for someone to, instead of building a year ra, I mean, a short-term rental, to build year-round rentals, to put multiples, you know, whatever it is, open up your lot. So you can put three on there to make it so it's profitable and there's a lot of really good things I see towns doing, so.
Yeah, it's, a lot of times, you have other developers in the room here tonight, I'm sure, but it's all about numbers sometimes when you think about it. It's where, where are those numbers acceptable and where aren't they acceptable? What sort of requirements would you want to put in place to make sure that, that it's a, you know, a kind of a mutually beneficial agreement? And, you know, I think that's part of what it boils down to. But also I, I would say, like, I, I work with a lot of developers and I work with a lot of towns. And if one of the things I could, one message I could bring to this table would be like, the developers aren't the bad guy. They're, they can be your partner, you know? And I think if you can approach it that way, then you're going to have decent outcome at the end of the day. But you also have to look pretty hard at your ordinances to make sure that you incentivize that relationship and not disincentivize it by requiring things that are just unrealistic. So, yeah, take a hard look at your, you know, your two acre zones and decide, you know, do you really want all those? If you like the open space nature of it, but we would require smaller lots, we could allow smaller lots which are cheaper. You can build less road and you're not going to have to spend so much, you're not going to pass that cost on to somebody. You're still going to have all the open space that you built before. Believe it or not, people do, don't mind living, you know, that close together on small lots, especially if they can afford it. We heard some really good comments too about, you know, I know people, I'm working on another, like a workforce housing development project in Mount Desert. And one, one of the things that I thought was really interesting was hearing from people who live in properties that have workforce covenants. Because a lot of us think, but why would you want to do that? Don't you want to invest in gaining equity in your home and that kind of thing? And it's surprising that you can still gain equity, number one, because there's a lot of good models out there. And number two, a lot of people want to invest in the community, not just their house, so they want to be here. And so the, the opportunity to be like, you know, triple-digit gains on your property, you know, in a short period of time isn't why people are buying in Tremont often, they want to be part of this community. They want to go to the school, volunteer and do all those other things. So you need to provide them those opportunities. Thought that was interesting too.
Yeah.
Lots to work on.
Yeah. Very complicated issue, yeah.
I've been trying to figure out for about a, a long time now how to, how do we, how do you start this conversation? I really think this is the way to start. So I would, if I had the opportunity to work with you on this, I would, I really would suggest just diving in with the planning board and say, let's talk about the issue and see what we can, you know, muddle through. There is a housing crisis on the island, nobody can deny it. But we got to this housing crisis over a longer period of time and it's going to take some time to get out of it. So we need to take a breath and like work on it methodically and don't be pressured to respond in a way that is not appropriate for what you, what you want to be. That's the plan I'm coming with, though, I'm a little more iterative.
Well, I like everything you just said.
Anyway, questions, other comments, anybody else? Happy to chat about it, I talk about this literally almost every week.
Question, yes, Andrew.
Noel, when you're working with Mount Desert, are you getting information relative to whether or not properties are year-round or seasonal and like diving into any of that detail as opposed to just, there's three hundred rentals itself in the town of Mount Desert, but maybe a hundred of them are seasonal and couldn't be lived in year-round and those type of questions or?
So that would be, look, I'll answer that in two ways. Number one is, we have like twenty twenty census data which actually says that more than fifty percent of the, of the housing stock in Mount Desert is seasonal. But you can't break it down and say, well, these short-term rentals are used as people that are only here for three months and they're one around there. So we know that in some cases we can find the base data to say, yeah, well, this community is a more seasonal community than normal. But if you were to do a license, you could actually ask that question and say, do you rent?
Yeah.
You know, and you're not, and, and again, it's how you define short-term rental too. So in Mount Desert, we went back to the state, what's the tax base, so it's twenty-eight nights every day. And I should probably move this in some, I'll do this, but twenty-eight nights or less and you're a seasonal, you're a, you're a short-term rental. And we would, we could ask that question on the application, do you rent, do you rent seasonally? Do you short-term rent year-round or do you short-term rent over in the, you know, in the season? So we could create an application process and that's the idea, that gives you the data that you need to make your decisions.
I would also think it would be useful to know whether or not it was a year-round house that was converted into a rental.
Yep.
Or was it built as a seasonal rental?
Right.
Those are two different.
Yes, but I think that comes from, you registered.
Yep.
You, okay, oh, I see so-and-so's house is now a short-term rental.
Right.
We need to go back to the tax records and do a little more research to determine like, like, I'll be, I'm continuing to use my own examples, so I'm not going to get in trouble. But the short-term rental that we buy has always been a seasonal rental. It was never anybody, but I had my best friend go across the street from there and I knew, we never saw anybody there ever, each separate in some way. So it's easy to, it's not, it's just an effort to go back and do that. It's not, it's just something you need to do, that you wouldn't, probably wouldn't ask that question on the application, you just have to do the research.
Right, but I think it's useful information to have, right?
Absolutely, yes. I think that I actually think the licensing.
You couldn't live in a year-round, so there's never been year-round housing stock that, that was taken out of.
Yes.
Right, and I, I mean, I think that's, that's useful information as you're tallying what has happened over the last.
I like the licensing process just for that reason. I think it's a good way to understand with a very light hand, how, what are we doing, what are we talking about? Because it's very anecdotal right now. And you, and again, somebody could argue that you could just go wait to AirDNA and find data, but it's not that easy to get accurate data. And so this is the way to get accurate data. That's something that this community is interested in, that's the way to do it. And I do think it's really useful, like, because then you can have a conversation that's based on common understanding of what the problem is and not an, an emotional response to other problems. And that's where we're, where we're going to do it.
Yeah, and I think it is a great idea for what you just said, because I've heard this many times before. They'll say, well, you know, thirty percent, just for instance, is your, that's what your seasonal population is. Well, how many of those are private residents that are not rented? There's no, you know, no true number on that. If you did do a, something of a registration, then you could get an idea of, well, an exact idea of how many are actually AirBnBs? How many are just people living for a month or two a year?
Yeah, and we're, you know, you're really asking only people that are renting.
Yeah.
Like, you know, less than twenty-eight days a month. And then there's exemptions we could talk about, like, look, if you live in your house and you rent out a room, do you really want to get a registration? Do you want to get a count of those, those types of uses? Do you, you know, if you live on the same property or you have an accessory dwelling unit that you're renting out, does that count as a short-term rental? Like, those are the kinds of conversations that we need to have, like who should register? And it's, so it's, again, it's a registration ordinance. I think it's licensing also, I should probably call it a registration ordinance and not a license ordinance. It's license, um, also like it votes more like the government's coming in to tax money, right? Likes the conversation when it's really the intent is to set up a framework for addressing it. But it really just makes it so that you understand what it is that you're doing. It could be a very light touch, it could be, maybe, maybe what we did in other places was put in some standards that, yes, are a little redundant for insurance purposes, but also like addresses some of the things that you're talking about. Then we, then we kind of skipped over noise because there's no noise ordinance in other towns and those kinds of things. Things that you're going to have to deal with as a board though would be, who's going to administer it? How much is it going to cost? Those kinds of things. Those, those are, that's where we take it from the planning board level back to you guys to say, but these are the things that you can figure out. Because it could be a little more like, you know, you just had zero budget.
There goes our budget.
So those are things that I would recommend being addressed before you even put it, before you put anything out to vote. Let's just figure out all the nuts and bolts.
Yeah.
Other communities are reacting to things a little differently and that's fine for them, but I think that can create opportunities for people to get focused on one thing. Like the ordinance is, that ordinance is intended, I'm just, the monitor ordinance is intended for one purpose, it is only to get an accurate count of the number of short-term rentals that are in town. And that's pretty much all it does. But it becomes a much more elevated conversation for you, it's, it's touchy.
Well, again, it sounds like a really good place to start because there's a lot of difference if we have fifty of them in town or five hundred. I mean, you know, it's.
You don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we can guess, we can tell, I mean, I could probably, if we have a planning board meeting to do it, we, we'll probably do like, this is a starting point. This is what we found online, you know, maybe it's two hundred, I don't, I don't know. We could map it a little bit and just sort of get a sense of it, but it doesn't help. It's just a start. It doesn't help in the same way.
Mark.
Speaking for myself and not the planning board, I like Noel's approach, first of all. You know, is there a problem is like the first question you have to ask and if there is, what's the extent of it? And the only way we can know about that is through some sort of licensing procedure. And I think it's worth looking into that. And certainly you guys have set a deadline for the planning board to develop something by August, right? You remember that, right folks?
Yes, Mark, we remember.
I think that's probably the, the best we're going to do by August.
He's always so bitter.
I think the intent marks behind that was just to make sure that it doesn't get swept under the rug and we keep, we keep rolling. I think we just want to make sure that.
Oh, now, now you've qualified.
Doesn't change a bit, Mike.
No.
You didn't say what August, right?
Yeah, we didn't say what August, did we?
I still think I would bring a question, I would add a question, is like, you know, what is the problem that you're trying to solve? And that is the biggest question to ask.
Yeah.
And again, if it is, and I think you'll figure it out once you get into these larger public conversations, but, you know, okay, great, we're trying to deal with this thing. And if it's, if it's housing as a year-round, you know, and I'm not even talking about income, like, we want more. Like, we want more year-round population in our community, every community on NBI wants that. So how do we deal with that? There's a, there's a huge conversation that has to happen. It's complicated.
But, but that's a separate issue, as you, you've said, right? And I know they're related, okay, but we have to deal with one before the other, there.
Well, I think there's a tool that you can deal with for short-term rentals, and that's through the licensing process. We can figure, that's, that's the easy, that's an easy tool to develop. It, it's, the details of the tool are not gonna be that comfortable to discuss, but that's, the framework is there. I could hand you an ordinance right now that you could take to town meeting, but it wouldn't be the town, the year ordinance, you know?
Which is what we want, yeah.
Yeah, but I think the question isn't, the question that I've observed is that short-term rentals is the thing that people are focusing on for that, and they're, you know, add a cause of the year-round housing issue, when it is only one part.
Part, yes, okay.
Thing, so what I would say is, let's identify, you know, that and other thing, if that's the main reason why it would be brought to the issue. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I, I like that he wants to put it in the hands of the planning board rather than sweat it.
Yeah.
Show it away.
Well, here's where I, the way I understand it would be that, to where the board, you don't like the final decision on certain things, but you're directing your, the appropriate group to come back with a thoughtful recommendation that you could then, you know, decide what to do with. Or the town has to decide what to do, the two are up to the town. But I also like hearing the planning board talk, because then I don't always have to stand up and be the one that gets all the terrorism.
Sorry.
But it's really, we're, you know, we're just coming up with tools. Like, that, my job is to observe what's happening in your community and help you come up with tools to address those things.
You sound like you've got a really great plan, and it all sounds great to me. Thank you for coming in and taking the time, and, and I think it's, it sounds like a way to start moving forward, at least. It's good.
Great.
Oh, yes, I don't know which one, right, carry it, Mark.
I used to have a quick question. I feel like I should know this if I weren't paying attention, but are, are there any workforce housing plans that Tremont is looking at right now? Any projects?
No, no. And that's one of the things that I've mentioned in the past, is we need to promote somehow workforce housing. Um, you know, I think that it's two vote, you know, it's two separate issues to me, and I think we need to get that rolling, you know? Find incentives, like Noel has spoken very well about it, and incentives to, uh, to get people to, you know, put in developments and, and whatever else. Yes, Mark?
Go ahead.
I just wanted to get this clear, you guys didn't make a decision or a, a vote on a motion or anything, but a- as far as the planning board's concerned, we can go ahead and assume that Noel, we'll be working with Noel to develop some sort of, uh, of plan for applications for short-term rentals? For August?
Right, that's the first thing, like, to get a registration application or that very stuff.
When it was brought to our attention, it was brought to the, um, the people who were, would like to see a registration. So that's what we're putting back to the planning board, is we have now hired-
That's what I wanna make sure, that's what we should focus on right now.
A registration, and then also, you know, after that, as you said, Mark, look into the, the whole, the housing crisis as a whole.
Right, right, okay, yeah.
Would you like us to make a motion very specifically to that, Mark, before we're done?
Well, I'll leave that to the town manager, but I would like it, yes.
I need to clarify something, I'm glad to make a motion.
I think you already did, but if you wanna say it again.
Okay, well, by the time we're done here, um, I'll, I'll be glad to do that. I just lost my turn of call. Maybe we don't.
Could I just add one thing?
Yes, yeah, go, sorry.
I wanna get to the, just make a comment since I have the opportunity to do this, um, about, you know, are there any workforce housing projects or, you know, like that being proposed? And I think that presents a question and an opportunity for the town. And where we are with this housing issue on NBI is, is communities need to be more proactive about doing this and start thinking proactively as opposed to reactively. That's really one of the only ways to get, part of, part of the tools to get through this. And we're all used to being very reactive. You don't wanna spend money on this, you're trying to save, you know, taxpayer money, which is great. But if you don't have enough residents to pay the taxes, you need to make sure you do have enough residents to pay the taxes. And so, um, I don't know, I would just continue to put the plug in that, as we're, as we're all thinking about these things, you know, switching the mindset to be a more proactive community regarding things that you want is the way to go, not just like react. Because in that way, you're gonna get bad outcomes if you're not proactive.
Have you done much work with the main housing authority? I sat in a meeting a few months ago talking about this, and they seem to be really flexible and try to be creative on-
Yep.
ways to make this work, and I don't know if you'd had any experience with them.
I've had some experience with them, yeah, I think, you know, that's a whole nother topic. When the main housing authority, their mission is to deal with housing of a certain income range, whereas, you know, you may also wanna deal with housing that's slightly above that. And what they're doing on a state level right now is actually working with, uh, DECDs of the Department of Economic Development, because their mission is a little broader, so you can start to think about housing as an economic development tool, which gets you to the income ranges, like, I'll call it that missing middle piece. So main housing has a lot of programs, and their partners have a lot of programs that can deal with, um, income ranges up to, like, a certain percentage of the area median income. I, I'm gonna say it's a hundred and fifty percent, I don't know for a fact. Um, but DECD might be able to start providing programs that, you know, get you higher, which is like, if you look at our area, you know, there's a lot, there is a lot of need for a certain percentage of the area median income. There's even a, there's a huge need for, you know, something in that middle range. And how do we deal with that? So that's a state thing that's actually being discussed with the town.
So, so the way, the way to go about, uh, the way to go about seeing what's available would probably land in Jesse's desk?
Yes.
Just wanted to be sure. See, Mark, it's not all you.
Does the town have any land that it wants to, you know, like, those are questions, you know, what tools do you have in your toolbox bringing out, and you could start, you know, what other tools you need to develop that, you know, will make it easier?
Yeah, okay. Thanks. Can you make a motion?
Yep.
Ready? Um, I move, we asked the town, uh, the town planning board to work towards having a registration ordinance for short-term rentals for August of this year.
Twenty twenty-three, Mark.
What's that?
Twenty twenty-three, August.
Look at this guy. He's a, gets, gets paid to do the work.
Do you want to also mention working with the mustering group to do so?
I think we've already approved that anyway.
Okay, I just wanna make sure it's clear in your motion, yeah.
I think we've already approved it.
All right.
I can edit if you want.
Anybody second?
Yeah, I seconded it.
Okay. Been moved and seconded to, um, ask the planning board to look into a registration process for short-term rentals. Does that sound good?
By August.
By, oh, by August. Twenty twenty-three. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, thanks.
Thank you, folks, and, and gives us something to focus on.
Yeah, was very informative to have someone who is, who's been through this, you know, to, I, because it's a very complicated process.
Well, there you go.
Yep.
Have a good one.
Be talking to you, Noel.
All right, next we have, um, the FY twenty-two budget encumbrance.
So, with the preliminary audit numbers back from law events, um, we can see the current amount rolling into surplus after your previously, um, you previously motion for some encumbrances, um, is one hundred and sixty-six thousand, two hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Um, this is the stage of the audit where we can make, um, final encumbrance requests before they finish it. I have four proposals, um, in your memo. The first is to encumber twenty-six thousand, one hundred and ninety-six dollars, um, from the administration budget to the FY twenty-three administration attorney's fees budget to cover the unbudgeted attorney's fees that were encountered, um, in FY twenty-three. The second is to encumber twenty-one thousand, four hundred and ninety-two from the FY twenty-two administration budget to the FY twenty-three employee benefits budget to cover the additional, um, employee that was hired at Public Works in twenty twenty-two. The third is to encumber forty thousand from the FY twenty-two Public Works budget to the FY twenty-three Public Works building budget for the possible, um, expansion project that we've talked about previously. And the final one is to encumber ten thousand dollars from the excess twenty twenty-two revenues to a new legal fees reserve account to be established at this year's annual town meeting.
Okay. Looks good, Jesse.
Yeah. How much is in the Public Works fund now for that expansion?
So it's been, um, rolled over each year, we haven't done a reserve for it.
I just want the total to-
It was, um, sixteen thousand. So I'm going to look at a different option than we looked at before, um, that would hopefully be right around or under the forty thousand, and then if that's not possible, I'd probably suggest that you put that forty in a reserve extra.
No, it looks good, Miss.
Yeah. Now, do you want motion on each of these separately?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Yeah, sounds good to me.
Yeah.
I move to encumber twenty-six thousand, one hundred and ninety-six dollars from fiscal year twenty-two administration budget to the fiscal year twenty-three administration attorney's fees budget.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to encumber twenty-six thousand, one hundred and ninety-six dollars from the fiscal year twenty-two administration budget to the fiscal year twenty-three administration attorney's fees budget. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
I move to encumber twenty-one thousand, four hundred and ninety-two dollars from the FY twenty-two administration budget to the FY twenty-three administration employee benefits budget.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to encumber twenty-one thousand, four hundred and ninety-two dollars from the fiscal year twenty-two administration budget to the fiscal year twenty-three administration employee benefits budget. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
I move to encumber forty thousand dollars from the FY twenty-two Public Works budget to the FY twenty-three Public Works building budget.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to encumber forty thousand dollars from the fiscal year twenty-two Public Works budget to the fiscal year twenty-three Public Works building budget. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
And I move to encumber ten thousand dollars from excess FY twenty-two revenues to a new legal fees reserve account to be established at the twenty twenty-three annual town meeting.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to encumber ten thousand dollars from excess fiscal year twenty-two revenues to a new legal fees reserve account to be established at the twenty twenty-three annual town meeting. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Okay. Now, wait a minute, suggestions for next meeting, we're meeting, we're missing something. Town managers are for.
No, you told me I didn't have to do it this week.
Oh, you get a week off, I see.
Only been a week.
I don't know.
Probably the hybrid mass has been super busy.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. Okay, suggestions for the next meeting?
Um, I've mentioned to a couple of you, I think we ought to look into trying to reform the, uh, Scuttle Zoe Committee. I mean, I know they do a land use ordinance advisory committee, I think they call them sometimes. Someone that work with the planning board, maybe a little less formally, and try to develop some of these ordinances. Planning board's getting pretty overwhelmed, and it used to be really effective. I know some of the ordinances in town have been put together that, I still go to in front of the planning board for their approval and input, goes to the slide board, and then goes to the voters, but it does do a lot of the background work. And, uh, I was on the committee for a few years, and I, I thought it was really effective. We just couldn't keep it staffed, so it ended up folding in. I think discussing that in a future meeting might, might be a good subject to discuss, I think.
Okay, now, good. All right, um, next meeting date?
I'll make a motion to confirm the date of the next meeting, from Monday, March twentieth, twenty twenty-three, at five P.M. at the town office.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to confirm the date of the next meeting, from Monday, March twentieth, twenty twenty-three, five P.M. at the town office. Is there any discussion? Hang on, Kevin. All those in favor? Yeah. All those in favor? This once a week thing is starting to get, yeah.
Second.
All those in favor? Yeah, you were just, your hand was up before you.